All right, friends. And I call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, April eleventh, six o'clock. Flag salute first? Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A nation under God. With its liberty and its freedom.
Please remain standing.
Good thing. Lord God, we come before you this evening, and Lord, we recognize that you are who you say you are. That you'll do what you said you'll do, and that you're always faithful, and your promises are true. Lord, tonight, we are simply asking for your help, Lord, as we conduct business in this city council meeting.
For the presentations today, I just pray, Father, that their hearts would be expressed and that, Lord, everyone in the community will recognize, Lord, what they represent as we work together. I pray that, Lord, as we are able to share on this platform our concerns and and our desires, Lord, in this community, to this council, that, Lord, everything would be weighed and that, Lord, we would trust, Lord, those that have been placed in position, Lord, to help this community be the community that it can be. We give you all the glory for all that you've done for us. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Jones Cruz? Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rachel Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
So, we have an agenda change with the consent calendar. We're gonna pull item nine point three for consideration at a future meeting. If there are any council authority members staff has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item, please declare that conflict as it's time.
I have a conflict, and it is... Which one?
Item eleven point two.
Thank you. Item eleven point two.
We have two presentations. Item seven point one, we have a presentation from Maripolic Works.
Cody Bridgewater, our Director of Public Works and interim LRA Director, will be presenting this item.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight's presentation is about our public utilities and who is responsible for the upkeep, maintenance, and repair of these items. Yeah, it was clicking on the on the computer itself. It won't change up here. Okay. So, the Public Works Department provides safe and reliable drinking water to the citizens of Riverbank. This is done through our wells, water distribution pipelines, and water service line. We often receive calls from citizens for issues with water pressure, leaks, taste and odor complaints, and other water quality issues. Once water is used in a household or a business, it is disposed of through the sewer collection system, which is a conveyance of pipes that take wastewater from the point of use to the wastewater treatment plant. The sewer collection system is made up of sewer laterals, sewer mains, and sewer lift stations. Regular maintenance is required of both systems to ensure delivery of service is not interrupted. This maintenance is required by both the city and the customers. So, the definition of a water source per our municipal code, section fifty-two point oh six, and it is the equipment and property of the city and the maintenance of lines. The city will maintain all mains, laterals, and appurtenances within the city right-of-way on city property or easements. It shall be the responsibility of all water users to maintain the water service line from but not including the water meter to the outlets of the line, inclusive of city easements. So, what this means in layman's terms is from the main line in the street to the water meter box itself, including the meter, is the responsibility of the city to maintain. From the backside of the meter to the house is the responsibility of the property owner. So, the water services. Here's a generalized picture of how this works. You can see there in the grayish color is the city responsibility. It shows the water meter, the service line, and the water main. Those typically are in the street or an alleyway. Sometimes we do have utility easements that run through private property, but that's pretty uncommon for a water meter. That's more common with storm drains, sewer lines, things of that nature. Then, everything after the meter is the responsibility of the property owner. So, if you have a water leak indicator on your meter, you might get a notification in the mail says, hey, you need to check your house for leaks. Sometimes it can be just on the backside of the meter. Sometimes it's a running toilet. Sometimes it's a broken irrigation line, which is what I had in my backyard. And that is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. Anything from that meter to the main line is the responsibility of the city. So, if there's a water leak in the street, maybe it's bubbling up out of the meter box, city staff will come out, open the box, drain it, and try to determine where the water's coming from. Sometimes it's from our side. Sometimes it's from the customer's side. We do the best we can to repair it with everything that we have on the trucks. Sometimes it equates in us digging in the road, digging up some asphalt, digging down three to six feet, depending upon the depth of the water main, and then repairing the service in the street itself. The one thing that you will notice is the water services differ greatly from the sewer laterals. So, sewer lateral is the sewer pipe that leads from the house to the sewer main line or the regional trunk line in the public right-of-way. And a sewer lateral is a private facility from the house all the way to the main line, including the connection to the main. So, the property owner shall be responsible for constructing, repairing, and maintaining the entire sewer lateral between the building and the sanitary sewer main, including the lateral building sewers, the tap, the saddle, or the wide connection at the fitting of the sewer main. City shall not be financially responsible for any sewer lateral construction, operation, maintenance, repair, abandonment, or other costs whatsoever, except where the city itself or its contractor reconstructs or realigns the sanitary sewer main, thereby necessitating the reconnection of sewer laterals to the sewer main. So, the city comes through and does a road construction project, decides, hey, we need to replace the sewer main that's in the street. It may go back right where it was. It may go back five feet to the east, the south, the north, whatever the case may be. The city at its expense at that time will reconnect the sewer lateral and make it whole. It's not the property owner's responsibility to reconnect their sewer main if we're in the street doing the work. If we have a contractor that's doing some other type of work, maybe it's another utility, AT&amp;T, PG&E, and they damage the property owner's sewer lateral, they're responsible to fix that, not the property owner. Apologize for the bluriness, but this gives you another visual representation of who's responsible for what. It shows the homeowner's responsibility there on the right. It shows the connection to the main line and the private sewer lateral running to the house. And this will vary depending on the location of the sewer line. Sometimes sewer lines are located in the middle of the road. Sometimes they could be under a sidewalk. That's why you'll see it's not necessarily associated with a property line. With the water services, they're typically right at the back of sidewalk. We try to do that common for everybody because water can kind of be placed anywhere along the roadway we want it to because it doesn't require a directional flow. Pressure pushes all the water through the pipe. It's not a gravitational flow issue to where we have to have certain elevations and certain orientations to make sure that the sewer flows properly. So, some areas of town, you might have an eighty-foot lateral. Others, you might have fifteen. It just varies greatly. And again, depth is another thing to consider, too. So, if a customer's having issues with their sewer main, what we recommend is they, sorry, their sewer lateral, we recommend they call Public Works, and we will happily go out, check our sewer main line, make sure that it's free and flowing. We'll run the line with our truck, make sure it's clear of any blockages. And if that doesn't fix the issue with the customer's lateral, then we recommend that they call a plumber. If they can call a plumber, get it cleared. The city will go out and actually camera their sewer lateral for free at no cost to the property owner to see if we can determine what the issue is that's causing the backups in the sewer lateral. Nine times out of ten, trees and root issues are the main cause. These trees, especially during the drought, the roots traveled, and they tried to find any water source that they could. They'll find any little crack and crevice in a pipe, and before you know it, that root ball is so swelled up that you can't hardly get a drop of flow through it. Another issue that we have problems with is cooking grease poured down the kitchen sink. And that will pool and coagulate in the line, and it eventually shrinks down, just like our arteries in our bodies. That fat and that grease will constrict and constrict until flow can't get through it. So, we tell residents, don't put cooking grease, even if you're running hot water, to make sure it stays hot to get through your sink. It's gonna cool in your sewer lateral, and then you're gonna have issues down the road. So, preventing lateral plugs and issues. Do not pour fats, oil, or grease down the drains. Collect the oil in a separate container and let it cool and dispose of it in your trash can. Do not flush wipes, diapers, feminine hygiene products, even if they're labeled as flushable. Yes, they might get through your plumbing, but then they'll settle out in the city sewer and then cause an issue there. Or if you have root intrusion, they can get hung up in your sewer lateral and cause problems. Some of these, like I said, the flushable products, they'll catch on intrusions and grease buildup, form the fogs. And then, don't plant trees or large shrubs near sewer lines. Willow trees are notorious for having traveling roots. So, if you have willow trees, be sure that they're not located anywhere near your sewer line. And then, when buying a home, consider having the sewer lateral inspected. Licensed plumbers' video inspection may reveal cracks, breaks, and offsets or root intrusion, and they may need to be cleaned, repaired, or replaced, and that can be a condition of purchasing your property. Have the existing homeowner do that repair or clean that lineup. So, again, if you believe that you have a sewer problem, contact Public Works first. If it's clear, we'll contact you and let you know you need to call the plumber. And if it's plugged, we'll clean the main line and ensure your issue is remedied. Our, sorry, our normal business hours number is listed up there, as well as our after-hours emergency number. And our emergency personnel are trained to handle sewer issues as well as water leaks. So, if you ever have an issue, even if it is after normal business hours, just call the emergency after-hours number, and staff will be there, typically within thirty minutes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that staff or the public may have.
So much. Are there any questions or comments from council?
So, there's clearly a difference as far as for the water lateral and sewer lateral, as far as from the main line to the home, and then who's responsible, and the starting point's different. But why, like, who determined that? Like, why is there a difference from the sewer and the water?
Typically, with a sewer lateral, we have no control of what goes through that line, right? The homeowner discharges to us, rather us providing a service to the homeowner. So, we can control what goes through the water main and through our meter. And then, once it gets on the resident's property, where it goes after that is under their control. Everything inside the home with a sewer lateral is completely controlled by the homeowner. There is nothing that the city staff can do to prevent them from putting fats, oils, and grease down the line, flushable wipes, diapers, things of that nature. So, the city has to protect themselves to the point to where this is your responsibility to maintain, and you are responsible for putting down only the materials that are supposed to go into the sewer system.
Thank you.
Is that standard practice? Most cities?
Yes, every municipality and entity that I've worked for has had this same approach. There are other cities around here that do take care of the sewer laterals at the property line, the city of Modesto does. But most entities do require the property owner to maintain and upkeep their sewer lateral.
Very informative, and especially when you put up the pictures and started, I guess in layman's terms, like you were saying, giving the explanation. Is that information, the actual photos and visuals on the website somewhere?
It will be posted on the website after this meeting. We wanted to present this to the public first, and then we will post this information on our website.
Are there any comments or questions from the public? Yes.
Excuse me, sir, if you could come up to the podium. We want to make sure we capture this for the recording.
For the the lateral, if there's an issue between for the homeowner going to your main, do you dictate how they correct it, or can they do it with like a sleeve system if it's a crack? The city of Modesto wouldn't let me correct it.
That's right. We do allow cure-and-place liners, so they do a trenchless technology now where a sock essentially is blown in to the sewer lateral, and then it's heat cured, and it creates essentially a new pipe within a pipe. So, we do allow that. That is an approved method of repair. However, if you're going to go with the traditional method of repair, we require that you meet the city standards and specifications, so there's particular sizes and pipes that need to be used. And it differs between property side and right-of-way side. So, one example would be you can use ABS pipe on your personal property, but once you get into city right-of-way, where there's gonna be traffic, ABS pipe doesn't hold up to vehicular traffic and has a much higher or lower collapsible pressure. So, we require that you use a standard material that the city has already approved, and that's in our standard and specifications that's on the city website.
I want to verbally acknowledge the mayor's here, but I'm gonna keep running the show, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, item seven point two, presentation on Juneteenth celebration to be held on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at the Plaza del Rio.
We'll make a brief introduction on this item.
Mayor and members of the council. So, we have Deborah Sullivan here with Sully Entertainment, and she has an event she's gonna tell you about that she has planned called Juneteenth Celebration. Deborah is new to the city. She worked with us. A lot of time spent at the teen center. She went on trips with a lot of the teens and came back around and told us about this event she wants to have, and thinks it's a good event, so I'll bring Deborah up here to tell you about it.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and the council members. My name is Deborah Sullivan. I normally call myself the Bora now. Yes, I have been living and residing in Riverbank for the last twenty-seven years. I own my house, and I did work here at one time for the city. I'm bringing this idea to the board to see if you would accept it. It's called Juneteenth, and I believe in that everyone knows that now it's a national holiday. I've been doing Juneteenth for the last twelve years in Modesto at the King Kennedy Memorial Center. I am now there as their president. And, but I've been since I've been here so long in this city, I would like to bring Juneteenth to the city that I'm living in instead of another city. So, what I did was I went and got some copies of the history of Juneteenth, just in case anyone didn't know exactly how Juneteenth came about. So, if you don't mind, I will read what I have. Okay, this is the history of Juneteenth. Juneteenth originated as a celebration of the ending of slavery in Texas. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, the mayor mayor general gone and one thousand eighty-six troops of the Union Army arrived in Gaveston, Texas, and announced that the Civil War has ended and all enslaved persons was free. Even though President Abraham Lincoln enmascification, crop complication, I can't even talk today, has gone into effect on January the first, eighteen sixty-three, freeing all enslaved persons in these states in rebellion against the United States for various reasons, and decree has not yet taken effect in Texas. The proclamation issued by the general number three announced, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance to the proclamation and the executives of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolutely equality of rights and the rights of property between formal masters and slaves, and the connections therefore existing between them becomes that between the employer and the free labor." This evening, thousands of people in Gaveston celebrated this freedom with dancing, singing, and fasting. In the year that followed, other southerner cities also began to organize Juneteenth festivals. It was not until July first, nineteen eighty, however, that Juneteenth was designated an official state holiday in Texas. Though the effort of African-American state litigators Al Edwin, Juneteenth became the first ambassador celebration granted official state recognition. Today, Juneteenth is celebrated not only in Texas, but in cities throughout the United States. Typically, Juneteenth activities include picnic parades, barbecues, ball games, family reunions, and it also time for people to recount the event of the past. Today, Juneteenth has taken on a more national perspective, celebrating African-American freedom while encouraging self-development and respecting of all cultures. So, as of today, Juneteenth will be celebrated here in downtown and Riverbank Plaza that will be on June nineteenth, which is the holiday date between the hours of eleven AM to five PM. And I did have the flyer handed out. I also, I was gonna do a slide, but slides always get confusing. So, I did do a layout of the plaza, and if you want copies, I do have copies for everyone. So, my idea of using the plaza, we will have vendors going up and down the street. Then, we have a stage area, which will have entertainment. I will be having a band, a fashion show, singing, dancing of different cultures. Then, we'll have a bounce house for the kids. And then, the vendors will have merchant vendors and food vendors. There will also be porta-potties for convenancy for anyone who needs. And it will be right there on the corner. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Yeah, any questions from council? Thank you, yes. Thank you for that history as well.
I also have a little souvenir to show you all the things I have done in the city.
Got a question, but I'm glad to see that we will be celebrating this, and I'll see you later. And I met you before. Yes, okay, thank you.
So much. We're excited to celebrate from the public. Are there any comments or questions? You're fine. All right. We are looking forward to it. So, we are arriving to public comment. So, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to maximum of three minutes or as stated by the and this time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the PoliCon period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do we have any public comment?
Hello, my name is Karen Canato. I live on Hoag Road. So, hello, everyone. Mr. O'Brien, glad you made it. Rachel, other city council members. Okay, I'm here to let you know that I strongly oppose to the Riverwalk project for many vital reasons. One is that it's rich, productive, local farmland, which means fresh and nutritious food at reasonable prices for everyone, including for low-income families. The more land that is removed from agriculture, the higher the food cost becomes, which of course affects disproportionately the low-income families. It's a flood plain land. Flooding will occur with its disastrous effects. It's a matter of when, not if. The riparian and wildlife habitat and corridors will be reduced and destroyed. Infrastructure remains inadequate, although it appears you're trying to remedy those areas such as sewer and water, emergency services, traffic, et cetera. You already have poor quality soils available to build on. So, please vote no when this measure comes up front of you on this project. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Randy Richardson. I live in Cottage Point Drive in Riverbank, California, and I just wanted to take this time to encourage everybody about Love Riverbank that's coming up on April twenty-ninth. It's only eighteen days away. And if you'll get on the website, loveriverbank.com, you'll be able to register to the different projects we have available. And also, there are a few projects that seems to be showing up that will be extended for helping some citizens in Riverbank, as well as participating in just celebrating and thanking all the ones that are working in our city and first responders. I wanted to just share that on that day, we'll be meeting at the over at the gazebo at the Community Center Park. At eight AM, we'll be having coffee, and you'll be handed a T-shirt that will be provided for you, and then we'll go into our work projects from nine in the morning till noon. And then, we get to return back to the Founder's Carnival. And each volunteer will be given a ticket, so they'll be able to get a free meal from one of the vendor's trucks, and I just look forward to everybody coming together and helping. And I just look forward to everybody coming together and help beautifying our community and then hanging out together at the carnival. Thank you.
Or on Zoom?
Um, Vice Mayor, there's no one on Zoom.
Um, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the city council on my L R A board, unless requested by an individual council member, authority member, or a member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon. Um, so um we are gonna go through every item except nine point three, nine point one. Waive readings, all readings of ordinances and resolutions except by title or waived. Nine point two, approval of the city council and local redevelopment authority board minutes from March twentieth twenty twenty-three. Nine point four, resolution authorizing the designation of the signatures for the city of local of Riverbank Local Agency Investment Fund or LEAF account. Nine point five, authorization for out-of-state travel request for Vice Mayor Rachel Hernandez to travel to Washington D.C. with the Stan Sloss Council of Governments, STANCOG, to advocate for city and county regional transportation projects. And do you have a motion to accept the consent calendar with the amendment?
A motion to accept the consent calendar with the amendment.
And I'll second it.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez. Motion passes five zero.
Um, so this public notice was published on March twenty-ninth and April fifth in Riverbank News. So item ten point one, resolution authorizing a nine point three inflationary adjustment increase to the City Riverbank System Development Fees based on the Construction Cost Index effective May first twenty twenty-three.
Tammy Alcantara, Assistant City Manager, will be providing the staff report on this item.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so tonight is a routine item. We are applying an inflationary adjustment to our system development fees. Um, and system development fees are defined as a charge by a local government agency to help fund and pay for the construction or needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements as related to new developments. The purpose of these fees are to defray all or a portion of the cost of public facilities related to the development project. So we last um did uh the comprehensive fee update in April of twenty twenty-two, and it had been uh two thousand eighteen was the one time prior to that. Uh, resolution two thousand fifteen twenty-one adopted the system development fees and authorized an inflationary adjustment based on the Construction Cost Index by city, published by the Engineering News Record. So based on DGS California Construction Cost Index, produced the E N R for twenty twenty-two, the annual CCI for California is the nine point three percent. So the nine point three percent was applied to all of the rates that were established from twenty twenty-two and are displayed there on the screen. And then that, this is your residential cost. This is your non-residential cost. They're different how they're applied. Um, non-residential is based on the square footage and residential is based on the per unit, the dwelling unit. So the overall increase um per dwelling um is here. So these rates, so our clustered rural went up by thirty-nine hundred, lower density and residential is twenty-nine hundred, medium density twenty-two, higher density nineteen hundred, and mixed use at um almost seventeen hundred. And then your non-residential commercial, a dollar fifty-nine increase per square foot, mixed use a dollar sixty-two, industrial business park a dollar fifty-six, and then your office is at one point three one or a dollar thirty-one, sorry. Um, so that's um, it's recommended by staff that the council consider adopting the resolution authorizing the nine point three inflationary increase to the twen- for the twenty twenty-three system development fees. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
I have a question. So since um our state is trying to address homelessness, do you see that the fees may be a deterrent to developers trying to um, you know, to address homelessness and building homes?
So I know the state is putting in a lot of the housing um laws that allows some flexibility in some of those development fees. I I really can't answer that. Um, I would probably say on the planning side, they would have more experience with whether those fees are affecting it. We also um work with our developers and can make those arrangements for um some kind of agreement in when they're developing so to work through those fees.
And some of what we've done in the past and that has been presented to the city council for consideration for projects is a deferral of fees to a certain point, maybe to occupancy, um to allow for their cash flow. We've also had a waiver of fees, as you've seen in some of the commercial um in new construction that has happened over the past couple of years. Uh, and one of the items that you're going to see coming up at a future city council meeting is the waiver of fees for the Ward Villas project. And that one's gonna be a slightly different concept that we'll be presenting um in is what can help make the projects affordable. Uh, so there are our ordinance does allow and does have the flexibility for the city council to consider some very creative options in order to encourage that affordable housing development.
Well, sorry, will our, the increase for our city, is it within a range of other cities or be close or?
So our resolution specifies the use of the Construction Cost Index. Um, that's been calculated, and so that's pretty consistent amongst other jurisdictions because these fees actually fund construction improvements. So it's gonna be your water, sewer, um, you know, general government and construction items um that it's funding, so it does follow that trend. You're welcome.
Question continues on with what you were talking about. The county, have they come up with their increases yet?
I haven't seen a public hearing come out on that, but normally uh every jurisdiction should be prudent and looking at their fees on an annual basis.
Okay, um, in the past, we have waived fees for a project specific. Um, the um the affordable housing uh complex that we we approved with almost every waiver except for fire protection. And so um I'm comfortable with that. Except for what is the now average cost for city fees for housing? I think you had it up there and it was really quick. Go back one more, please.
So for the residential?
Dwelling units twenty-nine thousand to uh thirteen thousand. Wow. So that's just starting off the
That's that's basically what the the impact that that development is having of on our infrastructure.
Right, and that's for the city. And then you have the county CPP and have all the others that go along with that.
Yes.
Um, so I'm gonna open public hearing. Um, yes. Questions or comments from the public? Or online?
Vice Mayor, we have one. Okay, there is no one on Zoom this week.
Close the public hearing and thank you so much. All right, new business, item eleven.
We do need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item ten point one.
And I'll second it.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Too excited. Okay, new business, eleven point one. A resolution continuing to approve River Cove River Access Closure Plan.
Uh, Sue Fitzpatrick will be giving the staff report on this item.
Mayor, members of the council, um, just a quick review in case um some people in the community or the council don't remember how we um solved the problem of River Cove so far. So for years, there was a lot of activity down in the River Cove development area, which is along the Stanislaus River there. Um, where there's a an area that accesses accesses the river and when the river is low, it a real nice sandy beach appears, and it's very attractive to people. And what happened is um, we found out that that little strip of area is the responsible of the city, not upriver and not downriver, but that particular problem area. So um we had a lot of complaints over the years um from residents in the community with people starting fires down there, illegal activity, just a lot of um damage to just the riparian habitat. So um in twenty twenty, the a lot of the residents met with council and came up with the idea to close that area, let it repair itself um for the summer of twenty twenty-one. So we did that and came back after that summer and uh reported that things were looking better. Um, I don't think I got one call all summer, which was definitely different. Things were really uh doing better as far as not not a lot of damage down there. Um, so we reinstated that for summer of twenty twenty-two. Recently, I had staff go down there um and they said it's looking much better. Um, of course, the water level is high, so you can't see the beach anymore. But um we're not seeing the garbage that we did. We're not seeing people start fires down there. We're not getting the phone calls. Um, the area is regrowing. Um, it's you could barely see the path and all the damage that was done to the riverside. So we wanted to come back and um request for a resolution to be approved to do that. Close again, May first to September tw- uh thirtieth. Come back and report to council, see if, you know, let you know how it's doing. Uh, see how the summer went and find out if you want to um continue that again for the following season or maybe close it permanently or reopen it, reevaluate. So but maybe just one more summer of letting things uh naturally rehabilitate. That is where we are right now.
I just recall sitting up here many years ago and hearing all that and seeing I used to live down there. I was thrilled to to hear and see the changes and um I just would like to encourage to keep moving forward with with what we got rolling. Good job.
No questions, but just a quick comment. It sounds like the closure plan's working. Uh, it does sound like we don't, I don't think we need to revisit it all the time, but I I agree with you. I think we should discuss either making it like a permanent closure plan. Um, because, you know, we are seeing the benefits. So, yeah, good job. Thank you.
Well, I agree that we need to continue monitoring. We have to be careful that we aren't purposely restricting access. Um, but we are trying to um continue the repair that was damaged over the uh decades of abuse. But we again, we have to be very careful. Is the Army Corps still on board with what we're doing?
They don't really have much input. Um, we had them out. We had fishing game out. We had everyone kind of evaluate the area. Um, they're pretty much leaving it up to the city, so they really don't have too much of a comment on on how things are going.
Okay, thank you.
So a quick question. Have we gotten any inquiries from our residents that live in River Cove if we're going to continue or?
I've not got any emails in two entire summers. So
So they're pleased.
I I haven't heard. I mean, I would tell you if I got an email saying, hey, we can't access the river. I haven't. Um, there were a couple of questions when the first summer we we did, we got a couple of questions on, hey, you know, what if we wanted to just go down there and fish? And, you know, we said, well, really, we explained what we're trying to do. We're really trying to stop that heavy traffic down there and the heavy use and the illegal activity. And um, you know, since then, I haven't, I haven't heard it. Now I'll get a whole bunch of emails tomorrow. Watch. But um no, normally um I would hear if people were upset, and I haven't received that input.
You're gonna come with formal options for how to proceed after the summer?
Uh, what we thought is maybe we would just have the resolution to close this summer, come back at the end of summer and discuss, you know, should we just keep doing this year by year or should we open it again or close it permanently, just with some more of the options. Uh, maybe I'll come with with three options in September, so it'll make it easier.
Um, are there any questions or comments from the public?
Hi, I'm uh Michael Halterman. I'm resident here in Riverbank. I was just curious uh how the city's involvement is involved with the access there. I know that their River Cove Drive is a public street and public has access to that. There is the levy there. Is the levy uh on a private lot that's owned by the city and that's where the access concern comes in? It seems to me that beach, if it's below the line of ordinary high water, that's a riparian issue, and that would be state lands, not city. Just curious of how the city's involved with that and um if we wouldn't need to defer to the state. Uh, it sounds like you've had in the past uh with the Army Corps of Engineers, which would probably be the governing body on that. Just curious if if there is a a lot that is owned by the city, maybe for the levy or something that is upland of that high watermark, which is why the city is doing that. Or if it's just they're trying to mitigate the concerns of the citizens, which is also, I'm sure, a valid reason to do that. So just curious question about that, if we have it.
Yeah, so from our research, um, there is an area that is owned by the city. The Army Corps does have an easement that is about twenty feet up. Um, so basically, our responsibility is to the water. And then from the water on, it would be um a variety of of Army Corps, fishing game, depending on what it is. But as far as restoring the habitat, we brought everyone out to get evaluated and they all felt we should be doing something, but it would be our responsibility. So if we wanted to replant, that would be something we would do. Um, but it's naturally coming back. So at first, we were gonna plant a lot of different things and spend a lot of money, but we just let it naturally, and I think it's it's doing a good job of that, so.
And definitely addressing the concerns of the residents in twenty twenty. Um, are there any other questions or comments or a motion?
Make a motion, we approve item eleven point one.
I second the motion. Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez? Motion passes five zero.
Eleven point two, uh, resolution adopting the Downtown Facade Pro- Improvement Program Guidelines. And uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez is gonna recuse herself.
Jessica, if you could enable screen sharing, please? Well, I can say that this item has been a long time coming. Um, it actually was a discussion that was initiated with the city council back when Jill Anderson was city manager. Um, at that point in time, we had discussed the possibility of establishing a grant program to be able to have our downtown businesses improve their facade. At that point, we were looking at a budget of twenty-five thousand dollars for a program like this. And unfortunately, we couldn't couldn't afford that at that point in time. Um, so we're very excited to be able to present this item today and be able to have our resi- our businesses um begin to take advantage of that. So we'll give it just a minute more so that I can share my screen. If we can put that up on the big screen. Well, then Jessica will have to flip through it for me. Okay, so if you can move to the next slide, please, Jessica. So just a little bit of background. The city council has had a long-term goal of enhancing our historic downtown. In 2009, we underwent an $8.9 million beautification project that improved all of our downtown infrastructure. That included storm sewers, water on all of the streetscape as well. In 2015, we then adopted the downtown specific plan, which included architectural guidelines for the look and feel of the buildings in the downtown specific plan area. In 2018, the city council developed a strategic plan objective to develop and present an incentive program for our businesses downtown. And in 2019, they solidified that with a goal to improve our historic downtown with an objective to explore opportunities for facade improvement programs. And then in 2022, thank you to the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The city council did approve an allocation of $210,000 in order to fund this program. So what we have for you today are the guidelines that we have developed for this specific program. The program is going to provide a matching grant, dollar for dollar of the facade improvement costs to the businesses and or owners for up to a maximum of $15,000. Now, the businesses do have to be located between or in the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan area. So those are any commercial parcels that are located from Callander Avenue to the west, to Fort Street to the east, and then from Acheson Street to the north and Patterson Road to the south. And then we've also included kind of a little tail end there of any businesses that have frontage along Acheson Road or SR 108, just west of Seventh Street to the city limits. The businesses have to be a commercial, retail, or office use. This is not applicable to any residential use within that specific plan area. It must be permitted or conditionally permitted via an approved conditional use permit. Projects must be in conformance with all applicable city codes and that does include the downtown specific plan architectural guidelines, any building codes, any permitting and any sign standards that the city currently has as part of its municipal code. We will reference all and refer all potential applicants to the downtown specific plan that is posted on our website. And it is the May 12 to 2015 version that they'll be looking at. Applicants have to be in good standing and have no active violations with any state, local, or city agencies. So if we are currently in any code enforcement efforts for that particular building due to lack of maintenance or concerns, health and safety concerns, then they will not be eligible for the program until such time that they remediate those items. They must receive all necessary approvals before any work is started for which the grant funds are being requested. And then, of course, the stranded practice for any of our grant programs is they'll submit invoices with copies of checks, et cetera, so that then we can turn around and reimburse them. Grant funds are going to be made on a first come, first served basis until the budgeted funds are committed and the program window for accepting applications will close. Projects must be completed within a six-month period from grant approval. The applicants, if they decide to do the work themselves, they will not be compensated for their labor, but they will be compensated for any materials that are used. Proof of owner acknowledgement is required as part of the application process if it's the tenant who is submitting the application. If any planning approvals or permits are required, the applicant themselves is responsible for submitting the project plans through the Planning Division for Architectural and Site Plan Review. That is something all of our businesses currently go through. So this would not be an exception to that. If a building permit is required, the applicant will be responsible for submitting all necessary plans to make sure that those are plan-checked and ensure that codes are being met. And the property or business ownership must be maintained for a period of at least one year after the grant is received. We want to make sure that the city's investment is not going, you know, to a business that has prop, you know, plans to close or is looking simply to beautify their building to turn around and sell it. What we hope is to be able to encourage a long-term investment in our downtown. So here's some of the eligible improvements. I'll just go over a couple of them. Of course, exterior painting, permanent landscaping, if any business that currently has any space to be able to do outdoor dining, removal of old awnings and installation of new awnings and new signs are just a few of the items that can be eligible for the program. We're looking for all of those items that are forward-facing to our downtown and that patrons can visually see from the street. Ineligible improvements would include any work that's being done to the back end of the businesses. Obviously, those are not forward-facing, so we would not contemplate making any approvals for that. Installation of, you know, plastic or vinyl awnings that don't fit with our standards. Any overpowering signs and all of this would be vetted through the application process that we have established. And so the process that we will go through is the application period will open. We will ask those that are interested in applying to schedule a pre-application concept meeting. This will allow our planning and building department to vet the improvements that are being proposed. We'll give a tentative approval. And then the applicant can submit their official documentation to us and we'll give them a letter of commitment. That letter of commitment will establish then the six-month period that they have in order to complete the, the project. Within that six-month period, they're then required to apply for their permits and begin the work and then hopefully complete it. And then, of course, our city inspectors will perform final inspections for those. And that is the end of my presentation. And so these are the guidelines that we have established for this program. We did look at a variety of cities that have very active programs currently within their jurisdictions to ask to see what their best practices are so that we could try to implement those here in the city. And we feel that this is a good way to move forward and allowing our businesses to make some necessary improvements to their building facades. Available for any questions you may have.
I just had one. I had one of the businesses ask me about where the money came from. I told them that it was the American Rescue Plan Act. But I didn't know what that meant.
So.
Grant that we got.
It's the federal government allocation that was given as a result of COVID. It was in an effort to encourage every, all the businesses, all the cities to kind of come out of and overcome the effects that COVID had on our businesses, on our own revenues. And so one of the allowable programs was to be able to do grant programs for our business. Previously, with the CARES funding that we received from the state, we actually did small business support programs to help them through COVID and it helped to fund payroll, any COVID-related expenses, like if they needed to put in barriers, if they needed to purchase protective equipment for their employees. And so this is one of the programs that we felt was a good fit. It's a program that we've been wanting to fund for quite some time, as I mentioned. And we thought this is the perfect opportunity to be able to do that.
Our funds. Thank you.
Just, I do have a comment and then a question. So I know it's been so five years in the making. So I think, I, I think it's important that we do enhance and, you know, continue to support our downtown businesses with the North County Corridor coming through and then with the transition of Acheson State Route transitioning over to the city over, over a period of like 15 years. I think it's important that we continue to improve 108 and continue to attract the, the customers that are, you know, coming and going via that route before they all transition over to the North County Corridor. So supportive of the, of the program. Just kind of curious, in the early stages, there was discussion of a, of a 30,000 forgivable loan, I believe it was, and over like a three-year period, 10,000 would be knocked off. Just kind of curious what happened with that option.
So as I mentioned in talking to some of the other jurisdictions that have several of these types of programs, they felt that when you have buy-in from the business itself from the get-go, it encourages them to stay long-term. A lot of times, even with a forgivable loan, if they end up, you know, defaulting after two years, you're, you're still out the money and now you're fortunately out 30,000 versus 15,000. So that's why we thought this would be a better fit and they thought, like I mentioned, it kind of builds in that buy-in from the businesses as well.
A way of securing the 10 grand every year. Got you. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One of the items you've mentioned were murals. One of my things have been in the past is protecting the murals to prevent them from being painted over or deteriorating. Once they are approved and they're paid for with art, will the city own them or can we protect them? I mean, this is something that we refuse to move forward to in the past. We're, we're now sanctioning art. Are we going to protect the art? Or is it just we're sanctioning it, but you know, the next owner can come by and paint over your festival?
So we've always sanctioned it and we have had discussions twice at the city council level regarding the adoption of an ordinance to be able to protect that. Of course, that requires owner buy-in on that because it is their building. So some of the discussions that we've had in the past is there's always been a hesitation to tell businesses what to do with their properties. So that has been, I think, what has held council back from adopting those ordinances. But that doesn't mean that the city council can't revisit those. And then having conversations with our businesses that are here downtown where we do currently have murals. They're absolutely beautiful and it was unfortunate to see one of the really beautiful murals that we had at the Fort, Fourth End Santa Fe entrance, entryway go away. And now it's just a blank wall that has the potential for getting, you know, graffitied over. And so that was very sad to see, but at any time that council desires to see that come forward once again, we can revisit that conversation.
Believe that conversation is needed, but not to where, you know, we keep repeating, having the same conclusion. There are many cities that have the protection of, of art. Whether it's an art that a building puts out in front of it, of their building is theirs, now becomes part of an attraction. Chicago has one, LA is one. I'm not wanting, I don't want to be LA. I don't want to be Southern California. No, Chicago. It's too cold, but that's something to consider. We're getting agreements from the businesses downtown because it's something that we have that they want. One of the things that have been discussion and have failed since 2010 is a BID. I'd like to have that with the California guidelines on forming a BID for downtown for the equitable dispersment and, you know, for businesses. When we're doing something like this, we have to be very careful that we are not excluding some of the issues that we need to resolve, whether they're environmental or the environmental justice, or that anytime that we submit or we approve, that we're equitable on, on who's getting the loans. First come, first served is always nice, but if you have a priority, first come, first served. And then you're making sure that you are equitable in the dispersed dispersment. I would feel comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable giving businesses the money to do improvements without a commitment and without prioritization.
For some of those out there, can you specify what BID is?
Business Improvement District, something that we discussed in 2010 and 12 and 14. And Environmental Justice. We know that.
And so kind of on that note, can you talk about the outreach process? You know, we're going to be a little more diligent on that or intentional?
So if approval is received tonight on this project, what we will be doing is we'll be sending out a direct mailer to all of the commercial businesses within the downtown specific plan area, informing them that this grant program is going to be available. Of course, we'll set up a city website with the information so that they can download any information they may need, start to build their plans. And then as soon as the application period opens, hopefully we'll get a slew of interested applicants to be able to come in and talk about their projects.
Are there any public comments or questions online?
Matt, I'm a co-owner of Kiwi's Custom Guns downtown, as well as a member of the downtown business coalition. And as a business owner downtown who's been heavily investing in, in the, in the city for some years, I definitely approve this program and we, we appreciate that it's finally come to, come to fruition. And I think it's going to help not only the, the, the issue we've had with building owners not wanting to help improve the, the downtown area, but so some of those guys will have that opportunity, but also for the business owners who maybe rent or lease who are, would like to do something, but have a, maybe a building owner that's not so acceptable to, to, to spend some money and that'll help them. Especially if they're planning to be in here long-term, which we have some great new businesses that are down here that have, that have come over the last couple of years. So definitely, definitely would like to support that. Hope you guys vote on, on a, on yes on that. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, we have someone on Zoom wishing to speak. Hi, if you can speak, please unmute.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, can you please state your name and your comment?
Okay. My name is Evelyn Halbert. I'm a downtown resident. The original purpose of the downtown Pacific Plan, which still is the purpose of it, was to preserve, protect and preserve our history, the historical district downtown, the buildings, also the downtown neighborhoods. This is not downtown Pacific Plan is not just about retail. It's not just about commercial. It's about residential too. There's a lot of residents down here. The downtown Pacific guidelines that you quoted on the last page of your project, your staff report refers to January 2015 Pacific Plan. The Pacific Plan was passed in May, on May 12th of 2015. And that is a set, whole different version of the January 12th one, of the January 25th one. The city's been using the May 12th one. That also includes the mitigation measures on that one. My question is, are, my understanding is that these what did you call them? Guidelines are simply for eligibility and getting the money. But in order for them, for people to do these improvements and stuff, they have to comply with the downtown Pacific Plan and what it allows and doesn't allow in order to protect the historical downtown. That's one question. The second one is the mitigation for the agriculture, for the historically significant buildings. They will still be required also to follow those mitigations. Or are they going to be able to, I mean, we're already having a problem with one down, building down here. I'm just wondering, is this new guidelines for the facade going to include Pacific Plan? They will have to follow it and they will have to follow these mitigations. Or how is that going to work?
Okay, thank you. Do you have any feedback on the two?
So with regards to Ms. Halbert's first question and the downtown specific plan that is currently being referenced, it is the May 12, 2015. So we will be changing that link that's, it was included in the original guidelines to reference back to the May 12, 2015. With regards to the second item, as with any project here in the city of Riverbank, if it's a, a significant enough project that it triggers the need for those mitigation measures to be addressed, then that is a conversation that we will have during that pre-application meeting that they'll have with us.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment?
There is no one on Zoom.
I'll make a motion to approve item 11.2.
I second the motion. Councilmember Oribet?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Council, can, uh, Mayor O'Brien? Vice Mayor Hernandez? Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Wait for. Okay, so comments and reports, item 12.1, any reports from staff?
Uh, of course, just like the same day as Love Riverbank, we are also holding our Riverbank Health Fair. So we do encourage everyone to attend. That will be at our Riverbank Community Center from eight to 1:00 PM. We have quite a few service providers and vendors that will be here for, for that. And then at one o'clock, wait, 12 o'clock, we'll have our Second Annual Founder's Carnival that will be at the Community Center Park right next door. We are still looking for volunteers. If anybody's interested in volunteering for the carnival itself, please reach out to our Parks and Rec Departments. And then second, as you've seen, we've been slowly making modifications to our audio and visual here in the city council chambers. We're really happy to announce that today we were able to go live on our Spectrum Channel 2. For any residents who have a subscription to Spectrum, they can see our city council meetings every second and fourth Tuesday at six o'clock PM and live and in, and in color. And that is all from staff.
Uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
For Love Riverbank, I do have a project that is not on the website yet, but it is regarding our first responders. So if anyone is interested in joining me with that project, please reach out. I do need some more folks to join me. And then I'm looking forward to going to Sacramento, representing our city at our Capitol. Thanks.
I just wanted to thank Public Works. I really found your presentation enjoyable and I look forward to at our future meetings to have one of those. I, I think that, that's awesome. It was very good to have those. And I look forward to the next ones. I too will be heading to the Capitol and I'm anxious to see what they have in store for us and, and spending some time up there with our legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So the Next Sister City Committee will be meeting on April 19th. We're going to be doing it at the Percos at 6:00 PM. We're all trying to encourage a plus one, just to try to grow the group. And then so we do have a set fundraiser date for June 24th at the community center. Some more information is going to come out about that. We're going to be a small part of a cultural event that's already happening there. So we're just going to kind of tag along there and try to make a huge impact for our sister city in Mexico. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. As we move forward with this facade improvement, I'd also like to have a discussion with the absentee landowners, homeowners that allow their, their buildings to be run down. Things that we have to repeat, there has to be a consequence. You know, they can't just move away and let the weeds grow and every quarter we go back and say, mow your lawn. We have an easement. You know, it's just, we have to bring it down. Galt had a good one. That was for the businesses that are absentee that ran out, but they have substandard units. Dwellings are substandard or just have you seen the, the weeds growing in the yards now? It rained a lot. There's a lot of weed. I'd like to see that come on up because that's going to be very important. With us, our commitment to the businesses, I'd like to have the businesses commit to themselves and at least having discussions on a BID, according to California guidelines. So they can say, okay, this is where we're moving forward and that is equitable as we move everyone together. That's something that has been ignored. And if we're providing funds, I think that they should provide commitment. Other than that, I am satisfied.
So yes, I want to also thank the staff for presentations and for being here and be able to decipher the, the expertise that's going on every day. I wanted to, I went over to welcome Del Rio as they had their grand opening. And like Pete mentioned, all the other businesses that are opening up downtown, like the collective space is a beautiful space that, that is opening up. And yeah, so I'm going to be joining the other two here over in Sacramento for this week to be able to advocate with our state legislators and the following week in DC for our federal legislators. So I'm pretty excited to be able to go out there and advocate on behalf of the city and bring back the report to you all. And with that, we're going to go to closed session. Item 13.1, Conference of Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation. Trying to read through the whole thing. Yes, okay. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9, number of potential cases, one. 13.2 liability claims pursuant to government code 54961, claimant Carl Snyder, agency claimed against City of Riverbank. And is there any public comment on the closed item session? It's limited to three minutes prior to us meeting. None online?
There's no one online, Vice Mayor.
I thought we're going to close to recess to close session.
Very good. Very good.
Ready? All right, so we're back from closed session, convening from closed session. Item 14.1, Report from Closed Session, Conference with Legal Counsel. Where are we? Direction has been given to staff. Item 14.2, Liability Claims pursuant with Claimant Carl Snyder. Unanimous vote to deny the claim. We are going to, without, we're going to adjourn this meeting. The next regular city council meeting will be on April 25th, 2023 at 6 P.M.